Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our March 25th Favel City Council meeting to order. Welcome those who are joining us in the audience and those who are joining us remotely. At this time, we were asked that Father Alexander Papageios from the Saint Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church, if he would come, and excuse me, sir, if I mispronounced your name, but if we could all stand for the invocation immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the pledge of allegiance.
It was the eighth grade, Your Honor, before one of my teachers got the last name right.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's okay. Thank you, first of all, for the invitation to offer the invocation this evening. Let us pray. Heavenly King, comfort of the Spirit of truth, you out in all places, so fill us all things. Treasure blessings and the constant giver of life. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for this evening that you have brought before us, that we honor. The city of Fayetteville, we honor our city council and the members thereof who tried their hardest, Heavenly Father, to do the best they can for our growing community. I ask that you bless them and their endeavors always. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for our city council and for the members of the community who always do the best they can for our church in Fayetteville and our religious community. Bless them, Heavenly Father, and their efforts always. And we thank you for our city. We thank you for Fort Liberty and the soldiers, the men and women who bravely protect our freedom. In this day, we remember in 1821, Greek Independence Day. After 400 years of occupation, we celebrate this day, March 25th, as a dual celebration of our liberty and our freedom, and ask for this community and this council to always give justice to all. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Well, Fathers, if you wouldn't mind, tell us a little bit about yourself, the proper pronunciation for your name and your church.
It's Papageikis with a hard G.
Papageikis, got it.
I haven't seen you in a while, Your Honor. It was, I remember Karen Brown's funeral week. That was a while ago.
Yes, sir.
And I thank you for this opportunity. It fell on Monday again, and this year on March 25th. And I mentioned to Dean O'Handras, who's also the president of our parish council, at our meeting last week, I reminded him that it had been a number of years ago. I don't remember, my memory is not as good as it used to be, like a lot of us, but now I'm kind of following what Billy Graham said a long time ago, Your Honor. He said, "I was never afraid to meet my maker. I just wasn't ready to get old."
Right.
And so he's exactly right. But we're a growing community. We have lots of children in our community. We have lots of soldiers who attend our community as well. And I'm proud now to have Mrs. Jensen and Dean O'Handras on the city council, and also my new representative, Ms. Green, and the great job that she's doing as well. And this is a wonderful opportunity for us, and I thank you for the entire community, for this chance to be here this evening and to share a little bit with you. It's an older community. We've been around since the 60s, so it's still going strong.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, at this time, as we move into the announcements section, I'll ask Mr. Grant Bennett and the 2-6 Project members to come up, or anyone you would like representing Grant. Good to see you, sir.
Absolutely. How you doing?
Doing well, man. Well, this, you know, my time flies. I think started originally conversation with Mr. Bennett probably three or four years ago or longer about a vision he had. And I'm gonna brag on you a little bit, Grant. I know you're a modest young man, but I saw this gentleman with two sharp guys on the cover of Fortune magazine in 2020?
2021.
2021.
Yes, sir.
And they said, "Well, you know, this, one of these young men are from Fayetteville." And I said, "Really?" And so looked it up, and Grant graduated Pine Forest, went to Morehouse University, Morehouse College, I'm sorry, and worked for Google and was on the cover of Forbes. So I'll leave it at that, Grant. You tell us about it, because you've been doing some phenomenal things, and I wanted to let everyone know.
Absolutely. I appreciate you, Mayor Colvin. To city council members that I have not gotten a chance to meet, my name is Grant Bennett, obviously. I genuinely appreciate you all for your time. Like Mayor Colvin mentioned, I am a North Carolina Fayetteville native. Went to Pine Forest High School, graduated from Morehouse College, and ultimately, I'll wait for counsel. Just for the record, my older brother told me to tell you hello. Absolutely. But to that point, extremely humble beginnings. Growing up here in Fayetteville, I played basketball at Seabrook Park with Dennis Smith Jr. We used to rip and run all the way to Fayetteville State and run around the bleachers as young people. Played baseball at College Lakes. My youngest brother was drafted by the San Diego Padres out of high school. So the community and athletics, creativity, innovation, all mean a lot to me. But today, I'm not here to talk about me. Today, I'm here to have a conversation and talk about a narrative that's ultimately an extension of a voice in the community and a generation of people here from our city. Ultimately, I'm here today to talk about my passion, my heart, but ultimately, our shared vision in regards to the culture. Something popped up? Oh, it's all good. It's all good. But ultimately, I'm here to, again, talk about my passion, my heart, and ultimately, this community. My ultimate vision is to ultimately cultivate the next generation of leaders here in Fayetteville through innovation and creativity. As a kid, I understood through all the things that we just talked about that I had a foundation, something that I could build off of, something that I wanted to come home to, and I knew I wanted to contribute to my community in a meaningful way. When we think of Fayetteville and ultimately that deficit narrative that comes when you think of our city, when you think of 2-6, when you think of our city, there's so many things that we could talk about, whether it's the fact that our median household income is $10,000 less than the state average, whether it's the fact that we're one of the more crime-ridden cities in the community in terms of statistics. My ultimate vision was to take everything that you think about when you think of Fayetteville and flip it. Make it positive, make it ultimately something that you'd be proud of to think of. So the 2-6 Project was birthed from that. I came home in 2020 as an extension of COVID. Had no idea what I wanted to get involved with, but knew I had some young people in my corner who were willing to trust me. And with a couple of camps, a couple of virtual sessions, we embarked on a journey to build what is now the 2-6 Project. And ultimately, the project has been a driving force of exposure opportunities here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. We've provided over $400,000 worth of community support over the last four years, $15,000 worth of scholarships to over a dozen students from our community. We've reached thousands through our summits, through our community activations, and ultimately, our social media presence, which boasts a net following of over 2 million people. Of our programming, we have over 30, within a three-year span, student athletes that have received scholarships to Division 1 to Division 2 institutions. Our Emerging Leaders Program boasts over 60 students from our community from underrepresented backgrounds, all of which have 100% representation in terms of their graduation rate. We've been able to partner with brands such as Google, Nike, Dreamville, Bank of America, and Adobe, to name a few. With that being said, we've also been able to travel and take these kids to Atlanta, Charlotte, and on Thursday, we're flying 25 kids to New York City for a five-day retreat. Thank you. To that point, everything that we've built as a generation, everything we've built as an organization, has come from people from our community. These connections aren't new. These connections aren't anything different. One thing that Councilwoman Jensen will tell you is, on the North Side, we build leaders. And the one thing that we want to make sure we do is continue that generation and continue that sentiment throughout the rest of our time. Again, this is an extension of a narrative that ultimately, our community, the people that are here are good enough to push things to the next level. As Mayor Colvin suggested, I have been on the cover of Forbes magazine. I have represented us on a national scale, being on the cover of Nike and their website. I've also presented this work to President Bill Clinton on numerous occasions. At the end of the day, though, it's gonna take more than me. It's just a vision, and ultimately, I want to make sure that our kids have the opportunity to share what they've done as well. So without further ado, I'll stop talking and allow Fred and Nicole to kind of give sentiments on the work we've been able to do as a community.
And Grant, just so that the audience knows, I know you gave us a lot, but basically, when I met you, you did a pilot program where you took a certain number of kids. You took them to Google and you helped them get some life skill training. So pick it up from there about, I guess, the...
Absolutely. So the Emerging Leaders Program was something I started when I was in college. It was something that we named after a professor I had who passed away tragically to cancer in 2020. When I came home, I wanted to continue that program in some way, shape, or form with our students. And the Emerging Leaders Program is simply an exposure vehicle we use for underrepresented kids from our community. The Pipeline Program actually started with Fred when he was a sophomore. We had 10, maybe 12, underrepresented boys at Pine Forest. We were doing leadership workshops weekly with them. I was flying and driving back and forth between Atlanta and North Carolina to push these things. That first year, we were able to offer an externship experience with J. Cole and Dreamville, where we brought the kids to understand the value of business and music, as well as what Mayor Colvin's talking about. Once we added Nicole, I want to say another 20 students to our program, we were able to travel to Atlanta, where we had a tech exposure opportunity that was sponsored by Google. Our whole thing is innovation. Our whole thing is exposure. We understand that our network in terms of technology, innovation, and creativity can be the foundation of something really beautiful here in the city that's different than the traditional narrative of being an athlete, being a musician, or an artist, things of that nature. So my whole goal is to be able to provide these exposure opportunities. It doesn't mean to develop leaders. Hopefully, that's a much better intro into allowing them to talk. So without further ado, Fred and Nicole.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Frederick Logan. I've been a part of 2-6 Project for three years now. I will be attending Johnson C. Smith University on full ride scholarship to play football, and I'll be majoring in communications.
Congratulations, Frank.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Wetzberger. I'm a senior and the student body president currently at Pine Forest High School. I've been with the 2-6 Project for the past two years, and I plan to attend UNC Chapel Hill in the fall to major in biology and go on to earn a doctorate of veterinary medicine.
Fantastic.
By working with the 2-6 Project, we have broadened our horizons and learned lessons that we can use in college and in our future career. One of the biggest part of our programming is exposure trips and traveling. I have been able to travel to Raleigh, Charlotte, Atlanta, and will be flying to New York later this week, thanks to the project. One of my favorite trips was definitely the two-night stay in Atlanta at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. We had Technology Exposure Career Day. While we were there, I developed my communication and collaboration skills by going around, speaking to different companies like Google, Netflix, Microsoft, Hulu, things of that nature, about what specific jobs they do for their company, and I put myself in their shoes to see if that was a career that I would like to go into.
These educational trips also tie directly into what we do with the 2-6 Project, especially with the Emerging Leaders Program. They took us to the Harvey B. Gant Center, where we learned a lot of lessons. It's in the base of Charlotte, North Carolina, and their whole mission is to provide exposure to young artists in Charlotte, North Carolina. And that really resonated with me, because a lot of what we do is providing exposure to students like Fred and myself, so that we can do bigger and better things. So a lot of these educational trips really just resonate with the two of us and all of the students in the program.
The first year of 2-6, when Grant was with us, we went to Raleigh for Dreamville Festival, and we had a chance to run the Dreamville Foundation booth, learned about the business of music, as well as the importance of community building. Another piece of programming is working with brands. August of 2022, 2-6 partnered with Wise Mind Movement, a big and still growing, a growing brand in Fayetteville. We collabed with them to show their new clothes. Well, we collabed with them also with Fayetteville Arts Council, taking pictures and videos and showing their new clothes, but as well as exposing both parties. Also, the emphasis to us, what Wise Mind emphasized to us, was being original and creative, because that would set us apart from everybody else, as well as the biggest, I'll say, the biggest lesson for that was to be creative and how to start a business, start to finish, included with, which included digital media, marketing, and supply chain management.
Another company we were able to work with was Bank of America, which was a huge surprise to me. We ended up going to the headquarters. We were able to talk one-on-one with professionals at Bank of America, and they taught us a lot about networking and how that can get us places, especially when we're looking for our future jobs and just in our future career places. They explained the importance of making sure that wherever we work, we want to know that our employees or our coworkers also share the values of the company, because when everybody shares those values, you really work towards the betterment of your community, which is something super important to everybody in the 2-6 Project. They then came down to Fayetteville. They talked to us about financial literacy, which is something that we are missing in the school setting.
To wrap everything up, without 2-6, I would just still believe that I'm just a football player and nothing more to my life than football here and in my future. But thanks to Grant and the organization, they have opened my eyes to who I truly am and what I can truly do, as well as the project definitely beneficial for the future youth development.
The program has also had an indescribable effect on my life. I couldn't really tell you exactly what it is, because I don't know where I would be if I wasn't in the project. But I will say, I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity that is presented for people like myself. I think it definitely opened our minds to what we can do and how we can take our careers and put that into community involvement. Even though I want to be a veterinarian, I can do a lot of things in the community regardless. It's not all about medicine. There are so many things we can do that we just didn't know before. So we just wanted to thank Grant and everybody with the project that has helped us do this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, Counsel, I appreciate your patience on that. You know, I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that they are the recipients of some of the grants that we had for next-generation workforce development, and we're connecting our kids to tech and to Google and to some of these other great things that they've talked about. Grant has been a tremendous driver of that, and I wanted to make sure that the council knew exactly some of the good work that we were doing. We hear the bad stuff, so now we want to make sure we give opportunity to hear about the good stuff for the young people here. So thank you. Keep doing it.
Thank you.
All right, Counselors, as we move on, we will ask that Chief Braden will come to the podium, as well as Favel Pack CEO, Ms. Greggs, and also, Community Redevelopment, Mr. Bernard Brooks, Mr. Mario Hardy from Digital Media CEO, Mario Hardy, DC2W. They would like to make a presentation to the chief. Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
How's the city council doing?
Good.
I see some new faces. I haven't been here in a while. Kathy Gregg, CEO, Fayetteville Police Accountability Community Task Force. I have my president here. I have Mario Hardy. We're Mr. Bernard Brooks, though. Sorry. He wasn't able to make it. We want to present this presentation to Captain Braden for his work outside of being a police officer. He invited us to go to his Interfaith Action Program that he's doing outside after, between the hours of 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in different areas of Fayetteville. We were able to actually go out there with him, meet people in the hotel, see what was going on, why people are staying in a hotel so long. Fayetteville Pack did donate to families and got them out the hotel, because they were there for four months. We paid for their security deposit and their first month's rent. We just recently went to Owen Drive last Thursday. But I just want to give him congratulations, because he is very transparent. He's accessible, too. Whenever I have questions that I see on TV, he's able to answer them versus not answering them. So I am very grateful that he holds himself accountable, as well as his police officers. And every time I tell him and I see him, I say, "Thank you for your work, but I still will check you." I'll let the president talk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chaliko Hurst. I'm the president of the Favel Pack, and I would like to go ahead and second everything Ms. Greggs has said. It means a lot for a person of my background, for a person in law enforcement, to have the integrity that the chief has and also be very accessible for the community concerns. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
And all I want to do is add to this, all the work that y'all see me doing in the community is because of this man. He showed me what was going on wrong in our community, and I didn't like it. So I started to do my work. And I know a lot of you see all the work I've done, but I contribute to this gentleman right here, because without him showing me that, I would just be DJing and not doing all the community work that I'm doing now.
Gotcha.
That's good. Well, I have to say thank you. If you remember, as I was applying for this job, one of the things I said I had to do was, you know, turn some adversaries into allies, you know? And there were some conversations that took place early, and when Ms. Greggs and I sat down at my conference room table and put some of the things out there. And had conversations on what we could actually do together. And I think that led to a ride-along, which led to some other community engagement projects. So I appreciate the recognition, and I thank them for their help.
We actually have two awards.
Okay.
And we thank you for your transparency and your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Favel Pack. And, you know, anyone that has followed our meetings know that this is something to behold tonight, to see Kathy Gregg and Chaliko, and not so much Mr. Hardy, as much, but they have not always been on the same page, but it's great to see that the community's best interest has come first and that you guys are working together. And Chief Braden, that says a lot for you and your team to have been able to bridge some of these divides previously. So thank you for that, and we wanted to make sure we give context to how powerful that is. As we move now to the Proclamation for Development Services, I'd like to, in honor of Development Services, my who would that be, Mr. Newton? Yes, if Dr. Newton and his team would meet us at the podium.
They're coming. They're on their way.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville is dedicated to fostering vibrant, safe, sustainable communities through effective development and services, and whereas the mission of Development Services Department is to work with and within the development and business community in order to achieve and maintain a high quality of life for existing and future residents and businesses by providing professional guidance and coordination of all planning, construction, and development activities to implement the city's regulations and codes while balancing economic, public, and private interests, all designed to align with good stewardship for our community. And whereas the Development Services professional staff work with the development community in partnership to align with the city council's strategic plan and vision to be attractive, diverse, and inclusive, city that is safe, innovative, and undefined. diverse, and inclusive, city that is safe, innovative, and undefined. Whereas the Planning and Zoning Division's work as planning partners to effectively and strategically manage and support the growth of the city through the land use plan, development and timely revisions, development reviews, and support of various boards and commissions in accordance with adopted land use plans, ordinances, statutes, and professional knowledge. Whereas code enforcement serves to protect and improve the quality of life and physical environment through efficient and effective violations abatement as guardians of the city. Whereas permitting and inspections provide safety and health of residents by ensuring all construction meets optical codes, ordinance through the performance of construction plan review, issuing, issuing building permits, inspection scheduling, and conducting high-quality inspections as protectors of all persons and structures. And whereas collectively, the Development Services professional staff continue to demonstrate a commitment of stewardship in helping and not harming persons in the city, which is in proper alignment with the ideals of the Fayetteville City Council. Now, therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April to be Development Services Month. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand of the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed since 25th day of March, 2024. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Mayor and members of the council, I didn't want to come up here by myself and receive something when the work of our team is really a collective effort. I hope that you have an opportunity to, uh, work with these individuals if you haven't already, and that it would be in pleasant situations that you get to encounter them in. Uh, I'm really, really pleased and proud of the department and the good that they're doing and the efforts to make our community better and better all the time, working with everybody in the community. So on behalf of the department, we thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you so much, uh, to the Development Services team, uh, for what you do, very important work. And now, before we move to our, uh, last, uh, acknowledgement or proclamation, which is Greek Independence Day, I understand Representative Wheatley is here. How you doing, ma'am? I want to acknowledge you. Thank you and welcome tonight. Any other elected officials in the audience tonight? All right. All right. So Counsel, we'll move on. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, you'll present this to...
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, uh, we are going to have the president of our community present this, and I'm going to read this.
Mr. President.
Counselmember Honduras. So, for those of you out in the audience, it's a great day for me because if anybody knows me and knows anything about me other than my children and family, the most thing I'm proud of is my Greek heritage and being a Northside kid. So I had both people in the audience tonight, so it's, it's a great day for Kathy Johnson. So, welcome, Father. Whereas on March 25th, 1821, the people of Greece declared their independence and liberty from the empire, which was occupied Greece for nearly over 400 years. Where it, whereas on that day, Bishop Eurasimus from Petros raised the Greek flag at the monastery and enticing the Peloponnesian to rise against their oppressors, and whereas the ancient Greeks developed the concept of democracy, in which supreme power to govern was vested in the people, which assisted the founding fathers of the United States forming our representation of democracy. Whereas Greek Independence Day is celebrated with patriotic speeches, parades, and military demonstrations across Greece. There are parades organized by schools where children march with the Greek flag while dressed in their traditional costumes. Whereas this year marks the 203rd anniversary of the beginning of the revolution that freed the Greek people from the empire. I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 25th day of March in the year 2024, Greek Independence Day. I urge all Fayetteville residents to learn more about the large Greek community and participate in their celebration of Greek independence with them. In witness thereof, I have set my hand hereunto the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 25th day of March, 2024. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
Thank you. You did a lot of good work.
I do want to say also to everyone here, how many of you have come to our Greek Festival and our spaghetti dinner every November? Thank you to all of you who support our community because you mean a lot to us, and it's always appreciated even though it's not always mentioned. Thank you all very, very much. And Your Honor, thank you for the great job you're doing. It's a, it's a wonderful occasion that brings us together, as I said before, and you and this entire city council are doing a wonderful job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to everybody here. Fifty-two years ago, I was at the city council in my Greek outfit celebrating Greek Independence Day. Have the picture.
How many years ago?
Fifty-two years ago. My mother dressed me up in my costume to meet the mayor.
I didn't hear you the first time.
I wanted to make her read me that. Okay.
We'll see everybody at Greek Fest September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Thank you, Father. All right. Well, thank you all, uh, for your patience as we make some important announcements and recognition for some of the great work that's taking place in our community. At this time, Counselors, we move to the next item. We'll go to the city manager's report, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening, everyone. Um, as always, I'd just like to ask citizens, if you've not done so already, please sign up for the city manager's message. It is an email that goes out every Friday that describes what's going on in the city of Fayetteville, as well as keeps you updated on things going on within inside the city of Fayetteville organization. You can access that newsletter by going to the city of Fayetteville's website, and it's the top button in the middle on the webpage. Thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, sir. All right, Counselors, we move to item 6.0. The agenda, I'll go to Counselmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to approve the agenda with the deletion of items 8.01 and 8.02. Um, if those residents who have came to speak in opposition will meet me in the lobby at this time. Thank you.
All right, so before you go, uh, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with the exception of 8.01 and 8.02. Second about Counselmember, uh, Hare. Uh, all right, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes for agenda approval with those modifications. And is Counselmember Banks McGluffin on? Okay.
Yes, sir, green.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, that is, you know, nine to one. Those voting in opposition, Counselmember Benevente. Um, but the agenda is approved with those modifications. All right, with that, I'll move to item 7.0's consent. All right. So, uh, Counsel, if you could, as you look at consent, if you could, I did have one additional question about item 7.06? Okay. So, yeah, I had a question about it. Definitely support it, I just need to hear something about something. There was something mentioned, so, uh, as you prove consent, if you could. Uh, Counselmember Honduras, is that your hand?
Motion to approve consent with the exception of 7.06.
All right. Is there a second? Second about Counselmember Hare, discussion on the motion? All right, those, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, uh, that is, who are we missing? All right. Um, so that motion carries seven to one by those voting. Um, Counselmember Benevente, he's stuck on red tonight. Um, so the only question I had about this, certainly I, uh, support this, uh, for sure. I just wanted to know, Mr. Hewitt, I know there was some conversation about the layout. They have, have they gotten to that point? Is this just for the initial planning grant, which I thought we already had approved?
No, sir, they've not gotten to that, that stage yet. I think this is, um, uh, more, would say, um, proof of concept and fundraising, um, all rolled up into one, which is what the 450 would go towards.
And the other part that we approve, what was that, an appropriation or what did we approve last year?
We have done this, um, before, but I think there was, um, a desire, and I will stand corrected if I get this wrong. Adam, it, uh, can come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So what the action for you is, yes, last summer, you did, you did appropriate the $450,000. That action's taken. This was a necessary point to contractually obligate us, and it dictates what that money's going to be spent on and inclusion of a resolution that's also required.
Okay. All right. Uh, Counsel, that's all the questions I had about it. Um, if you could, uh, entertain a motion to consider approval of this.
So, move to approve, Mayor.
All right. All right, this is a motion by Counselmember Hare, second about Counselmember Thompson. Uh, any discussion, further discussion on this item? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right. All right, Counselmember Benevente is in. Uh, sir. Uh, motion carries. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Attorney Paul Young, I think moving forward, we should have maybe moved that item to a later part of the agenda.
I, um, I have my, my button pushed, but it's okay. We just, that item will be 10.02, and the clerk can record the vote as such.
Right. So now, before, when we had an item, a question on consent, you could pull it and then do an up or down vote on it. So what's the difference?
We just did that, except once you pull it, it then goes to other items of business because now it has a separate vote. So consent, if you agree to consent, you're saying yes to everything there.
No, I get, I get that. I know it's a separate matter, but does it, doesn't it fall at 7.017 or, or 8.01?
No, sir.
Okay. When did y'all change it? Oh. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. All right, so moving on, now we're down to, uh, 8.0 has been removed, public hearings. All right. All right. All right, Counsel, at this time, we are preparing to hold hearings where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak, the city clerk by name and address before the beginning of the meeting. We begin with a staff presentation, and then we'll move into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed on the items of the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement a single person has been designated to speak for the entire matter. In this case, that person may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, asks that you please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record, may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining, and the timer will ring at the end of your allotted time. With that, I'll give way to you, Ms. Green.
So this is, uh, case number SN24001. It's the consideration of renaming of Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. So this is, uh, a request that was received by Cumberland County to rename this street. Um, the reason they're giving for the request is for the street name is to honor an legend, odd leggins, legacy of an extraordinary man who contributed so much to the community. Um, county staff contacted the owners of the apostles of budding Providence Street. Twenty-eight owners were contacted, um, 13 responded, 12 agreed, and one disagreed. This is a map that shows the, where Providence Street is located. As some of you probably know, this was heard by city council back in December 12th, 2022. Two people spoke in opposition, and city council voted to deny the request by a vote of six to three. Um, county staff received their new request for this, to rename it with the same name and for the same reasons. Um, the county evaluate, evaluated the petition and found no conflicts, duplications with the proposed name, and they recommend approval of the name. Until, unless you have any questions.
All right. Um, Counselmember Hare, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chester, um, if you would, uh, keep me from trying to find each item, you said that the letters went out on Providence Street. And give that number again of...
Twenty, twenty-eight properties. So it's 28 properties, they received letters. Thirteen of those properties responded to the letters, 12 saying that they agreed with the renaming, and one saying that they disagreed with the renaming.
So 12 in favor? And how did the, how did the city get the response?
So the county sends out the letters, the county gets the responses, and then they, when they get a majority based on their ordinance, then they send it over to the city, to me, so that we can bring it here in front of you. Um, they respond back with a, I have a copy, but they respond back with a letter basically saying whether they agree or disagree, and they can mail it back or send it back to the county.
And that's the residents?
That's the residents, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, so with that, we'll, uh, open up our hearing. Thank you, Ms. Green. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Ma'am. We have 11 speakers, um, eight in, in favor and three in opposition. Our first speaker is Ms. Sarisa Aiken.
Good evening, Ms. Aiken.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and panel. Um, I am Sarisa Aiken, a minister at Howie Holand's Church of Deliverance. I'm here on the behalf of Bishop JP Swinson, renaming that street. He has been, um, bought his first property there in 1990, which is 34 years now. I have been with him for 30 of those years, and he has been such a person where he's a giver. He was a giver. And it doesn't matter if you was part of his membership or not. I have seen him give many vehicles away. He had a fleet of mobile homes, and he's seen people that were in need. He gave them away. I have seen him every, uh, I think it was Wednesdays, every Wednesdays, he fed the homeless, and he said that was their spaghetti lunch. He did many things for many people, and it didn't matter who they were or whether he knew them. If he could help them, he did so. Whether they came to, for rent need to be paid, light bill need to be paid, he was there. He was the to-go person. He would be there to do whatever necessary to help anyone if he could. He was well-known in the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina. He have participated in many events in Fayetteville, including the WIDU radio station celebrations, Martin Luther King celebrations. He was there. It was nothing that went on here in the city of Fayetteville that he wasn't part of. So I'm here in agreement with the name change to JP Swinson Street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Ms. Ruthie Toby. Ms. Toby? Ms. Toby? Not you. Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Wiggins.
Good evening, Ms. Toby.
Good evening. My name is Missionary Ruthie Toby and I'm a proud eighty-two-year-old member of Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance for over twenty-five years under the leadership of the late Bishop James P. Swinson. He was a pastor of many qualities and that is self-control, leadership skills, empathy and understanding the feelings of everybody. Pastor had no respect of person. Bishop played many roles and ranging from teacher, preacher, leader, love everybody and will do for any and everybody, no matter what. Glory to God, not just the members of his congregation. He was an humble man who always put the needs of others first. He will make sure that you are taken care of before he is taken care of. He's a patient man who never too busy to help anyone and his motto was follow peace with all men. Bishop Swinson was selfless, never thinking that he was better, but always took time to show how much he appreciate them. He met no strangers. He loved everybody. He touched the lives of people far and near. To know him is to love him. He went above and beyond the call of duty, not only in our church, but wherever he saw a need that arises. He received, back a while back, the Pastor of the Month Award and that was an honor for us. And he retired from Fort Bragg as the head chef after thirty-seven years of excellent service. And his community's service had no boundaries. It took him everywhere, everywhere feeding the homeless, no matter where. You would see him on Saturdays feeding people here in Fayetteville, outside of Fayetteville. It took him all the way to Mississippi during Katrina. We miss Bishop Swinson and having Providence Street renamed to JP Swinson Street will be an honor and another way for all of us to remember him, his life and legacy and keeping his memory alive. Thank you for your time and your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Wiggins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening, sir.
City Council members and staff. My name is Elder Robert Wiggins of 2621 Laurel Lakes Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. A member of the Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance. For the past twenty-six years and I live in Fayetteville, North Carolina. I've come to speak on the renaming of the Providence Street and I'm in favor of renaming it to JP Swinson Street. I had the pleasure of knowing Bishop Swinson for over twenty years. After meeting with him in 1998, for the first time, he left a lasting impression on me and I know he has done that on, same on plenty of others. He's well-known in the city of Fayetteville beyond and was about assisting and serving people, not just the members of his church, but any church, all while serving his own family. By being around him, I witnessed the effect he had on people. He never met a stranger. That was his personality. He would talk to you and help you no matter what your status in life or your nationality. It made no difference. He was very influential in Fayetteville and the surrounding communities. He was very active in outreach to those less fortunate. He sponsored an outreach that gives away food, clothing, book bags and toys. And that outreach still continues today. He could be seen gathering food, not just during holidays, but to be given away, not sold to those in need. This is one thing that I want you to remember. You did not have to be a member of his church for him to give you help, counseling or assistance that was in his means. And if he could not help you, he was able to direct you to the right place to get you some assistance. I can also remember when some people needed a place to hold a funeral, he would open the doors of the church free of charge. He was a member of the pastors coalition of Fayetteville, supported WIDU anniversaries and if my memory serves correct, he has prayed before this City Council. Serving people was what he did. And if I might quote him, "Love is not what you say, but what you do." He served the community well and deserved to be remembered. And when they see that name on the street sign, they can say, "I remember he helped me." Therefore, I am in favor of renaming Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. And the community he served, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Carleen Hampton.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Carleen, Minister Carleen Hampton. I live at 1427 Averton Court in Fayetteville. I am in favor of renaming Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. Fayetteville has a long history of naming its streets after those who have had an impact in the city's history and development. For thirty years, Bishop James P. Swinson has worked diligently to improve our community and the lives of those he has come in contact. The late Bishop James P. Swinson was the founder and pastor of Highway Holiness Deliverance Church and located at 2725 Providence Street. He was my pastor for more than twenty years and he also became the pastor to our two adult daughters, their husbands, as well as five of my seven grandchildren. Bishop Swinson was very active in the community and served on several boards in Fayetteville that sought to aid the displaced and disadvantaged. His faithful service included teaching God's word in the church and putting it into practice outside of the church. Bishop encouraged us to follow him as he followed Christ and to follow peace with all men. He demonstrated God's love by performing weddings, homegoings, baptisms, baby dedications for those in the church and those without a church home and he provided these services free of charge. When Hurricane Katrina struck Mississippi, Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance, under the leadership of Bishop Swinson, received several families and provided food and lodging until the government services were in place. His love for people is evident still today as our outreach ministry continues to provide food, clothing, toiletries, school supplies and blankets, toys and bikes at Christmas. Bishop James P. Swinson is a vital part of the history of Fayetteville. His work and legacy lives on in the hearts and minds of all the lives that he touched. My sincere prayer is that you will keep this man's memory alive by granting this motion to rename Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clark Hampton.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, and to all the council members.
Good evening, sir.
I just thought about, I should have just stayed down. That's my wife, amen? And we didn't even share notes, amen? But anyway, I reside at 1427 Averton Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina. To the mayor and council members, I stand before you today as a member of the church on behalf of Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance, which is located at 2725 Providence Street. On behalf of my late great Bishop James P. Swinson, there is not enough time in the day to cover all the great things he has done. For my life, he was a positive role model for over twenty years. When I met him, he gave me a life, gave me the life to stand up and become a man, a great husband, father, grandfather and role models, not just for my family, but many other families. When Hurricane Katrina hit, as my wife said, we had a member of our church, several members came and whatever they can get in from Bay St. Luke, Mississippi and Gulfport to Fayetteville. And again, you might as well say that his operation center was open. He made a few phone calls and everything happened. Restaurants was donating food because he has a lot of military members in his church. We were making things happen. All he had to do was say what he needed and we happened. We made it happen. You would have thought that the president said all hands on deck. It doesn't matter what church he was from, if he needed help, they came to help. As one of the brothers mentioned, that he was a part of the Pastorial Alliance. I've gone to some of those meetings with him, with Pastor Brinkley and those guys. It was, he's an amazing man. You never, if you ever meet him, he changed your life. You'd know who he was. Several of those members that came from Hurricane Katrina are still living here in Fayetteville. They didn't return back to Mississippi. He had a way about him. Once you met him again, you loved everything about him. There's nothing more that I can say at this time, just know this. He loved God, he loved his family, he loved everyone else. He also loved his community around his church. Again, I stand today and I am for the renaming of Providence Street to JP Swinson Street.
Mr. William Simmons.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Deacon Simmons. I live at 8429 Frenchmont Lane, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I've been a member of Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance for thirty-something years, thirty-four years. I was the one that with him would go out to the different areas to see what actually that he did. He would go out and it didn't matter who you were, where you came from, what color you were, short, fat, skinny, it didn't matter. He didn't care. He had a heart for the people. I'm for the petition to change the name to JP Swinson Street. Upon looking up some facts about Providence Street, you know, I couldn't find no data on it. But when you think about the name, we're requesting a change it to the James P. Swinson. This will make you stand up and cheer. This man was a chef for thirty-seven years at Fort Bragg. Matter of fact, he was so good at what he did, they named a grill after him called Roscoe's. If you go to Fort Bragg, Fort Liberty, you'll be able to see it. He helped with the local radio station, WIDU. I think he did more than help, I think he did a lot more than help, but he was an influencer for WIDU, amen? And then what he did was, he helped with the local events. He also, he also, he also met with the different pastors and they would meet and talk about the different things they were going to do for the community, how they're going to change things. JP Swinson was a man of faith. So with that being said, he built, he was led by God to build the church at the end of Highway Hol- at the end of Providence Street. His mission was to let people know that no matter what state you're in, in life, there's always hope. He had a vision to set up a food bank, which he did, which I was with him. We went to different places, we collected food, we delivered food. It didn't matter. He was a man, he did exactly what he said he was. I remember a time when we went out and they were so happy to see this man, so happy to see him bringing food, clothing. I've never seen anything like that before. Like Elder said, if you would have met him, you wouldn't forget about him. And you know, and Katrina happened without hesitation. Without hesitation, oh, I got twenty-nine seconds. Without hesitation, he went up and did what he needed to do, amen? All right, so with that being said, with that being said, it would be, we would consider it a great honor for our late JP Swinson to have his street named after him in his honor. Thank you, amen, thank you.
Ms. Marmika Swinson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone, Counsel. My name is Marmika Swinson. I'm speaking on behalf of the family, the Swinson family and the church family, Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance. I reside at 2741 NC 20 Highway West, St. Paul's, North Carolina. I want to talk about Bishop JP Swinson and why I'm in favor of changing the name Providence Street to JP Swinson Street. I'm not only his great niece, he has five generations in this city and overall in North Carolina, more than that, more family. But he was not only the rock of the Swinson family, but the glue that held us together. He was not only our bishop, but the founder of Highway Holiness Church of Deliverance. He served his community with love and support. He did it with grace. He saw no colors, no gender, no discrimination. He was a friend and family to many in Fayetteville. From business owners, the homeless, your everyday working-class citizen, all surrounding areas, even outside of Fayetteville, he was a friend to all. He never met a stranger, as you hear everyone say that, because that's true. Everyone he came in contact with, he loved them and they loved him. Everyone that met him or known of him would only speak positive words because that's what he displayed. He didn't just say the words, he or preached the words of God, he lived the words daily. He loved his family so much, he wanted them to go in the direction in which God led him, that when he opened his church, he came and got all his family members and wanted them to be in the church and till this day they all are. And at our churches, it doesn't matter if your family, whether blood or not, that he loved each and every person the same, he didn't discriminate. Even though he will be missed, it will be an honor for the city that he served daily to change the street, Providence Street, which the church resides on now, to JP Swinson Street. In remembrance of him, it will be a blessing to not only his family or the church family, but the whole city of Fayetteville. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Vandrey Aiken.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Audrey Aiken, I reside at 2240 Honey Lane, Hope Mills, North Carolina. My, I want to add to the sentiments that everyone has already spoken about Bishop Swinson. Bishop Swinson built the church over on Providence Street. When he built the church over there, it was a lot of crime. That was a crime-ridden neighborhood. Anybody that knew that part of town back in the eighties and they knew how it was over there. But he built that, the church over there and changed many people's lives over there. Not only did the people change, but a lot of them got saved, a lot of them, you know, turned around and residents that are there now, you know, they can sleep in peace knowing that this crime that used to be there many years ago, because Fayetteville, a lot of Fayetteville has changed since then. But he did great things and not just right there in the local community. As you heard, many of them say that he brought in people that came in from Mississippi, housed them. When the trailer park that was down on Bragg Boulevard back then, he owned many of the trailers down there and he would put people in those trailers, house them. And like I say, he was a great man, but he was a bad- And he, like I say, he was a great man, but he was a bad landlord. When I say that, it's because people didn't pay rent, he wouldn't put them out. He, he'd give them an opportunity. He didn't put people out of, out of the house when they didn't pay rent. He didn't go down there and have them evicted. You know what, he gave them another opportunity. He knew that there, oh, that's a single mom, that's a single family right there. So he'd let them stay there rent-free until they could give him a little something on the rent. And eventually, he gave those, gave trailers away to people that was in need. And fed the needy, he did all of that. Not only just to the, the Highway family, but he opened his church doors to many pastors around that needed to baptize anybody. There was a baptism pool right there. He opened the church doors up for that. And, let me see, anything else? Weddings, all of these things that he did, he didn't charge anything. He was a great man. He was a great man. And so we have, I want everybody to stand that came in tonight, and not everybody, everybody that came here is just here in support of trying to get this street name changed. And so changing this street name would be a great way of honoring.
Your time is up, yes, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Vicki Moore.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Vicki Moore. I'm here to represent Darrell and Effie Management Trust, properties twenty-seven ten, twenty-seven twenty-two, and twenty-seven twenty-four Providence Street. I think this is the second time they've requested a name change. Both times, my father has mailed or hand-carried his opposition. His letters have specifically stated, his tenants simply cannot afford it. They'd have to change their IDs, there's driver's license, address labels, everything. I spoke with two of the tenants this morning, and they were thanking me for coming in here to oppose. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Beverly Lou San.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Beverly Lou San. I am speaking on behalf of twenty-seven oh-five Providence Street. My parents bought that house in nineteen seventy-three. We still own it, my nephew lives there. I personally knew Reverend Swinson, and he is a very, was a very nice man. Changing the street name is, it would be a great honor, however, it would be very inconvenient for those who still live there. My nephew lives in our home, it's going to cost a lot of money to change all of his ID and everything else that needs to be changed. And change is going to cost the city to change maps. And I just disagree, I think there's so many other ways you can honor someone. There are a lot of really nice people in Fayetteville that have done a lot of things for Fayetteville. And I was thinking about former Mayor Dawkins. Instead of changing Hay Street to Dawkins Street, they simply renamed the post office, which was better for the city, better for everybody involved, same as MLK, trying to figure out how to rename something for him, instead of going down Merkison Road with it because of the inconvenience, they changed the CBD Loop, which didn't affect any residences, to MLK Freeway. I, I don't want to seem like an enemy of the church. I go to church, but this is just an inconvenience. I am in great opposition of renaming the street. There are other things that you can do. You can adopt the street in his name, rename the church. And that way, nobody's address has to change. And, and I, I do have, am I allowed to ask a question?
Uh, to us?
Yes. So the report that said there were twenty-eight letters sent out, there is like eight houses on one side of Providence Street, and then a duplex and a house on the other side. And so I'm really a bit confused, as I was the last time we were here, about those twenty-eight properties. I don't know who those people would be. There's only a few owners, myself and Ms. Moore. And then I think the church owns a couple of houses, so I don't know where that information is coming from, and that's confusing to me. But I stand in opposition. Like I said, there are other ways to honor an individual. And if he followed peace, I don't think he would want the people that live on Providence Street to be inconvenienced, to be inconvenienced. And it's going to be a grave inconvenience. I think that's it. Thank you for your time, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, our final speaker is John Hart.
Evening, John.
Good evening, sir.
Outstanding members of the council, how y'all doing today? My name is John Hart, I live at twenty-seven oh-five Providence Street. I've lived there almost twenty years. Like my aunt said, we bought the house in the seventies. So it's been a house, been in our family, but fifty-some years, whatever, so. Just to echo what she said, I don't want to be adversarial with the church, I just don't agree with them. I mean, far as I can tell, I mean, Pastor, Bishop Swinson, I never had a problem, he always seemed nice to me. And I agree with him, he was a great man, but in terms of the neighborhood, everybody that came up, nobody lived there, I do. I've lived, I've lived a long time, nobody lives on that street. And I never see them doing any community outreach for us, coming, trying to straighten up the neighborhood, anything like that. There's an empty lot next to me that's almost continually trashy. I myself went over there and cleaned it up myself. I've never seen any of the church folks go over there, clean up, do anything around the neighborhood, anything like that. Most time I see them, they're going back and forth to church. So, and I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, I just feel like, you know, you don't even live in the neighborhood, you want to make, you know, change that impact people that live in the neighborhood. So I find that kind of, kind of funny. And like the gentleman said at first present, the representative talking about twenty-eight properties, only eight houses, eight houses on the street, and two of them are vacant. So it's some inconsistencies. And, you know, I just disagree. I just don't think it's a good idea. Because like I said, it's going to impact a lot of everybody on the street that has to change their ID, change their bills, all that stuff, so I just, I just don't agree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have no further speakers.
All right, so that council, we have any, any questions for staff or for the proponents or the opponents of this item?
I guess I'll go forward, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Maha.
This is a very.
Questions before I close the hearing, and then you can.
Oh, no, you can close the hearing.
All right, so that will close the public comment part of the hearing. All right, Councilman Maha.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the probably the most difficult cases for me personally in a long time. I, I love to try to support the community. And the question was asked, I wanted to know just how many direct residents were going to speak. Because we have done this in the past, I do understand when it is stated the cost and what a resident or a business owner, which we, we've heard from both tonight, would have to go through as far as changing whatever it is that they have to change, from taxes to ID to bills. I mean, it's just a number of things that I just can't think right off the top of my head, my thoughts tonight. So this is very, very difficult. I wish that there was something else that we could do to support and honor Bishop Swinson, which I don't think I've had the honor to meet, but I could have. And so I'm, I want to, tonight with the most deepest, difficult decision for me is I want to support the direct community of the neighborhood. And I've heard, I've received a couple of calls on the outside of the two, the three people that came tonight that directly live there on Providence. So I would not be able myself to help, to support the, the change of the name. It's, it's hard, but I, I have to, I'm, I'm listening to what some of the citizens are speaking, even though that number may be small, but I do know what it is, what it takes to change and the cost that it will take for these individuals to change. I look back over when we were doing the budget for the bus, and we, there were some that were saying, well, we're only going to increase it five cents more, or twenty-five cents more to ride the bus. Well, that probably didn't make a whole lot of pressure on others, but for those that were directly impacted, it did. And so we had to, we had to honor and pay attention to that regardless of whatever the other thoughts were. So tonight, Mayor and Council, I will not be able to give any support to change the name of Providence Street.
All right, and Councilman Maha, Councilman, any other, Councilmember Benevente? Or, yeah, Benevente and then Mayor Proto.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. My understanding was that a survey was sent out, and in fact, twelve residents of the area were in favor of the name change. So if we're, if we're looking at just, you know, raw numbers here, I think the folks of that area still overwhelmingly are saying they're in favor, even adding the two or three folks that came, the two or three folks that called you. It sounds like the neighborhood, you know, is still in favor of the change. And, you know, certainly inspired by the community that organized themselves to come out tonight as well.
So, Councilmember Benevente, where are the survey results?
My understanding, if you don't mind, to our city staff person?
They're not in the report, but I have the printout from the county of what they sent. But, so those twelve votes, though, just to clarify, some people own multiple properties. There are twenty-eight properties, some of them are cut into.
Is this using a thousand feet radius, or is this just that street?
This is just the residence, so I, I don't know if you can, if we can, can I? Show it up there, but you can see that there's a few properties that are, you know, slivers. So each one of those properties gets a say. So there are, you know, one person that basically said they agree, so that's three, that's three of the twelve that responded, so. The church has a few properties too, so they also get, so.
How many is a few?
Uh, the church has five properties that they got sent to. So that's five of the twelve that they said.
So five of the twelve were from, how many multiple owners answered it? I guess because seeing the total number of twelve, is it twelve different, or is it just twelve respondents?
No, so there were one, two, three, four, five, six total responses back.
All from different individual people?
From different individual people. The church is five, a single person, somebody with three, somebody else with three, and then another person that has one property, and then the one person who disagreed that sent back.
All right, Councilmember Benevente, I'm sorry, I just wanted to get clarification.
No, no, I mean, that's, I, I think we're confirming that the majority of those folks on that street are fine with it.
Well, I don't, no, I don't think that's what he's saying. He's saying that there were multiple owners, I mean, one owner of multiple properties that he counted as a respondent of the twelve.
So how many people do we have, if you, okay, there's still more?
Six, six property owners of, well, yeah, six different people responded. I mean, I can add you this, but, and I don't know all the time. But there's a lot, there's a lot of vacant properties up there, so I don't know. It doesn't tell me whether or not.
All right, council, any other questions, comments? All right, I guess we'll read this. All right, so, yeah, is Councilman here? All right, can you repeat it?
Yes, sir. I was saying, Mayor, as far as this, as far as item eight point zero three, I would not, I move that I, that Providence Street stays as is, to deny the motion, to deny the, the name change.
All right, so motion by Councilman Maha for denial of eight point oh-three is there a second? Second, about Mayor Proto, Jim Jensen, a discussion on the motion. All right, this motion is for denial, so green means denial, red means against denial. All right, council, I'll look to you for your vote. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Red.
All right, so that motion is five to five, so the motion does not carry, it's split. All right, council, is there a subsequent motion? Councilmember Benevente?
Is there a way that we can find out maybe more information about the estimated costs for the neighborhood? Perhaps the folks who own multiple properties are going to go through a process of adjusting all of that, and maybe they can, you know, pull together with some of the other folks who are concerned about costs? And, you know, are there, are there some other things that we can do to help address some of the financial concerns? Because it seems to be the only real concern. Everyone recognizes that the bishop is more than worthy of the name change. We're just talking about a few dollars here and there. And I'm not saying that to belittle you all, I'm saying that to, if that's the only, if that's the only barrier, can we overcome that barrier? So that's my point. It's not to belittle the costs, it's to say, can we meet you where you're at with the costs? If that's the only barrier, can we ask that question of staff and see generally how much it costs to make these types of changes?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they know. So, hold on, hold on, please, we'll, we'll keep the order of it, if you could, please. All right, so Councilmember Benevente, either there can be a motion to table this to where additional information is obtained. I don't know that staff can get into it, maybe they can meet with some of the residents and see what type of costs that they can anticipate, but I'm not sure, you don't know how many IDs and.
It could be an estimate.
That's a variable, you know?
It, it can be general. Just can the staff person maybe respond to what that maybe looks like? Or does that look like something that isn't beyond the pale?
Councilman, Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. The, the item failed, so there's nothing to table.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it kind of has to be.
It needs to come back, or unless we have a motion to reconsider.
All right, I, I move that we reconsider. I think that, you know, we've heard plenty of information, and I think if there's some financial barriers, you know, something could be done to assist folks with that. So I'll ask that we move forward.
All right, is there a second to the motion to reconsider?
It will be three fourths.
Okay, because it's an agenda change.
On the reconsideration.
All right, is there, is there, is there a second to the reconsideration? All right, is there, is there, is there a second to the reconsideration?
Second.
All right, second by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. All right, discussion, you had a question on the reconsider? This is just to reconsider to either table it or to give some further instructions. But if not, it dies and it has to come back, you know, according to the rule process. Yes. All right, so is the second by Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin? Any other questions on the reconsideration? All right, go to Councilmember, Councilmember Green in here.
When Councilmember Hare expressed why he could not vote for it and support it tonight, he mentioned possibly coming up with another way to honor Bishop Swinson. I think that's a great idea, and I wonder if Mr., if Councilmember Hare would be willing to meet with the folks, since it's his district, and come up with a maybe alternate plan.
Well, I see the attorney's light, and I know sometimes, oh, that's not your light? Okay, all right, Councilman Hare, you had a response to that?
Yes, sir, Mayor, and that was a thought. If the church is willing to meet with me, I, I, that's without, that goes without a doubt. That's easy for me to meet with them. But I was just wondering if there was another way that we, the city, could honor the bishop, and even maybe honor him within that location. I'm willing to sit down with the church family and let us go through that. And if there's another way, because there's more than just the street name, I would love to sit down with you, and if there's an alternative, then come back and be the driver of that here on, on the council. And if that's okay with you all, because this was hard for me, guys. This was very difficult for me.
Well, first, before we get to that, we have to get disposal of the motion to reconsider.
He didn't get a second, so...
Yeah, he got a second, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. So it's time, time to vote, really, if there are no more questions about the motion. All right, so...
And I guess this is a point of order. If we vote in favor of this motion, with three quarters of us, the very next motion could be the recommendation by Councilmember Hare. So this is just to bring it back to life, at which point I think there might be a majority.
Then further action can be considered, yeah. Good, Madam Attorney? All right, all right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes, this is for reconsideration. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right, who we missing? All right, most, Councilman Hare, you voted against your motion to reconsider?
I didn't motion to reconsider.
Oh, Mario, okay, all right. But you, you're not in support of it? Well, the motion carries to reconsider anyway.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, seven to.
Yeah, and you can make that eight, yes.
All right, so now, if there's a motion to, to table, give an opportunity to speak to residents and to the church?
What I would like, if the, the church body, or those that are here tonight, if you all would like to meet with me and see if there's something else that we could come up with, I'd be more than happy to walk out and meet with you, give you my card, and we can set up a meeting. That's up to you guys.
All right, so, so the only motion we can make, because you can't really get a good response tonight, would be to table it for later consideration, give opportunity, and you can put a date specific, or you can give an opportunity for...
Yes, sir, Mayor, I'm, I move that we, if, if I'm in order, that we table this item for tonight and come back with some additional options to support Bishop Swinson.
All right, this is motion by Councilman Hare, seconded by Benevente. Discussion on the motion. All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes, this motion is to table, give an opportunity for discussion to occur. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin? All right, looks like we're all green, all right. So item is table, good luck on that, guys. I hope we work out, I hope you work out something. All right, Counsel, moving to the evidentiary hearings, special use permit. Give a minute to clear out, good job, good job. All right, guys, we're trying to call a meeting back to order, so if you could, if you're exiting, if you could please keep your voices down. Counselors, we move to the evidentiary hearing. We're now moving to hearings that require the city council to hear sworn testimony. This is an evidentiary hearing. The city council's decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence presented during this hearing. All those wishing to speak must be sworn in, provide their testimony under oath. Counsel, if there are any conflicts you wish to disclose, please do so at this time. Axes, the city clerk affirm all those who would participate in tonight's hearing. After that, professional staff will please present the case before I open the hearing. Any to swear in?
Yes, sir, we have five people signed up. Mr. Tim Evans, Mr. Scott Brown, Mr. Rafael Rivera, Ms. Elizabeth Vassar...
And, and as she calls your name, if you can come up and take your oath, please.
And Mr. Richard Bryant. If you could place your hand on there. No, all together, and raise your right hand. Okay, there you go. Okay, all right, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, those who are testifying. So with that, I'll give it to you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll, we'll open it up.
This particular case has been tabled a couple of times, both in January and February, and is finally coming back to you for the evidentiary hearing. This is special use permit 2401. The applicant is Mr. Tim Evans. The request is for a, to build a duplex on the road, on this property at 1040 Stamper Road. The property is 2.25 an acre. This is in District Two. As you'll recall, last month, you had a rezoning on this particular piece of property. It was rezoned to lower the, or to increase the density allowed on the property. And now the special use permit is coming to you with the request to build a duplex on this particular property. You can kinda see where it's located here on Stamper Road. As far as the zoning, again, it was rezoned last month. It is surrounded by SF-10 zoning, it's now SF-6. Our land use plan calls for medium-density residential on this particular property. And this is just how the property currently looks. These are some of the surrounding properties, north, south, east, and west of it. This is a site plan that the developer is looking, is proposing to do on the piece of property. Again, it's one duplex, two units, and they would be situated like this with two drives coming out to Stamper Road. Again, the future land use plan calls for medium-density residential. The medium-density residential is intended for single-family developments on small lots with duplexes and townhomes interspersed. The small size of subject property would limit expansive development that is not in keeping with the surrounding area. Duplex is the most that could be done on the property. Any development other than single-family dwelling would require additional reviews and approval, and that's why this application is before you tonight. Again, this is a special use permit, so you do have your six findings that you will have to consider for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will entertain questions for staff after your hearing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Did you open the meeting?
Hmm? Oh.
Thank you, sir.
I thought I had already did it.
Thank you, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Tim Evans.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, and city council and staff. I will make this short, I will relinquish my time to Scott Brown and 40 Site Solutions. There is an error made on the plot plan that was sent in. I have met with DOT, and there will only be one driveway on the duplex, and not two. Only one driveway. And if you guys would like me to come back with any questions regarding construction, I'm representing my builder, I'd be more than glad to come back. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Brown?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Scott Brown, 409 Chicago Drive, Suite 112, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant for a special use permit. As was explained by Mr. Harmon earlier, the property was rezoned last month from SF-10 to SF-6. And a, we are here tonight requesting a special use permit for a duplex. A duplex is an allowable use in SF-6 zoning. However, it does require a special use permit to be approved by city council for putting it in. If you'll look just slightly onto the, onto the west area, Elm Street, if you go back to some of the zoning, all of Elm Street is zoned MR5, and most of MR5 zoning is multifamily. You have the single-family subdivision in here off of Stamper Road. And it's my understanding from talking with Tim, I was trying to get some history of, history of the property, is that lot has never been developed from, since that subdivision was put in many, many years ago, as I understand. And why it's not developed, I don't know, I can make some speculations, but nobody's ever built on it. So we're proposing tonight to be able to ask the city council for a special use permit to put a duplex on it. Think we got an opportunity to be able to make something out of it. And as such, I understand, I noted there are six requirements that's got to be satisfied in order to issue a special use permit. And I'd like to go through those tonight before I, and then I'll, I'll go through those, and I'll sit down and be available for any questions that the council may have of me. Item number one, the special use complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specifications of the ordinance, including Section 30-4C. Yes, the SUP is going, it's going through the TRC process, and it's in compliance with the UDO. The SUP is required for multifamily in a SF-6 zoning district. So it is applicable with the, with the current ordinance requirements. Item number two, the special use permit will be in harmony with the area which is located. The, I'm gonna call it duplex townhomes synonymous with each other. A duplex is nothing more than a two-unit townhome. The duplex will appear like a standard single-family home, except it will have two doors. Tim just mentioned it, it have one driveway, one shared driveway between the two units. There are other multifamily structures, as mentioned before, along Elm Street. The total footprint size for the townhome would not be any larger than what a single-family home would be allowed in that, on that current lot. So from the outside looking in, driving by, other than seeing the two doors, you wouldn't really notice the difference between that and the, and the standard single-family home. Item number three, the special use permit will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The SUP will not endanger the public health or safety to use as residential and be consistent with the surrounding uses. Item number four, the special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plans and policies. Townhomes are allowed in SF-6 zoning with the approval of an SUP. MR5 with multifamily housing is located along Elm Street. It's in compliance, as Mr. Harmon mentioned a few minutes ago, about medium-density residential, and SUP is in accordance with the land use plan. Item number five, the special use will not substantially injure the value of abutting land or special use, or special use as a public necessity. It's not a public necessity, but it is not, should not substantially injure the abutting land. The townhome will blend into the existing community, as mentioned, it is a residential use. And there are other areas in town where you have duplexes, townhomes, that are surrounded by single-family homes. And so this is not a singled-out case. Item number five, no, item number six, the special use complies with all other relevant cities, state, and federal laws. Yes, it will be in accordance with the current UDO and all other local and federal and state guidelines and regulations. So with that being said, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board or the council has of me at this time, or maybe after, I noticed some in opposition speak against it, maybe I'd like the opportunity to come back at the end and try to address some of the opposition's questions.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Rafael Rivera.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, how are you doing?
Good, how about you?
Councilmembers, if you guys would have asked me four years ago if I paid attention to these zoning signs, I'd say no. And because of that, we have that wonderful building on Kane Road with a handful of registered sex offenders. So now I pay attention to these signs. When I first noticed the sign at the end of November of last year, it had a sign of A2350. When I went to work, I immediately looked it up, and I could find nothing about that sign. It wasn't until one of the neighbors within a 500-foot radius told me that in the letter, the correct number was P2353. But that sign stayed up, the incorrect sign stayed up until after the zoning board meeting. And I, I couldn't figure out, maybe it was...
Was that for this case?
Yeah. The original case back in, the zoning case, in December 12th last year. And I thought to myself, well, maybe this was an honest mistake, or maybe it's because Mr. Evans repeatedly stated how him and Greg Harmon were really good friends, and they've known each other for a very long time. Can I give her these folders to pass out to you guys?
Yeah, any evidence you want to give in, yes, sir.
Sorry, Courtney, I didn't have one for you. So anyways, and why we're even here right now is because Mr. Evans bought the property in September of 2021 for $8,000. He recently sold it for $50,000 in this past January. So why he's fighting for this, I, I don't understand that. The first picture is the, the gentleman on Kane Road who, his victim was four years old. I just wanted to point that out. They also did a survey back in January, and it went from 0.25 to 0.32 acres. That, that property increased in size by three, almost 3,000 square feet. One of the things, my concern is the safety of the individuals in my, in the neighborhood. Try to come out of Cherokee, if cars are parked, if it's only one driveway and cars are parked on the street on Stamper Road, vehicles trying to come out of Cherokee, and vehicles come out, I come out of Mantio Street, will have to find another route or peek around the corner with the chances of getting hit. It, it's blocking the view, basically. I mean, if Mr. Evans wants to build a single-family home that meets the neighborhood, I know, I knew in his application, he stated that it fits in with the neighborhood. It's in harmony, it's not in harmony, because Greenwood Homes, which he mentions multiple times, mentions multiple, multiple times in his application, Greenwood Homes, there's not a duplex in Greenwood Homes, there's not an apartment, there's not a townhouse. Greenwood Homes has always been a single-family home. I mean, if he wants to build a house, by all means, he has, he has a right to. But why build a house now when you made $50,000 profit, or close to $50,000 profit? It went up like 515% that he made off of this. So I'm not sure who's gonna build this house now, or this duplex now. It's just, it, it, it's a safety concern, it doesn't meet harmony with the surrounding properties. All the houses surrounding this property are homeowners. All the houses surrounding this property are homeowners, are homeowners of this property. So you throw in a duplex right there, that's not in harmony with, with the neighborhood. I mean, my main concern is, is I think it's number three or four, the safety of people coming in and out, and it not being in harmony with the neighborhood. It just doesn't fit in. Mr. Davis, you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not a problem. You look like it dozing off on me.
All right, Mr. Rivera, make your comments. This is a testimony period, so you need to be testifying to build your opposition. That's why we gotta stay focused. All right. All right, any, any, any further?
That, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Our next, sorry, our next speaker is Ms. Elizabeth Vassar.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Testa Vassar. I live at 1924 Cherokee Drive, just to the south of this property. It's literally my backyard. I am in opposition to the duplex for several reasons. The property is at the top of a hill and it's a popular cut-through road. It is very dangerous and adding potentially four more cars coming in and out at the top of the hill, one driveway or two, doesn't matter. It's, could be an added hazard. I drive off of Cherokee every day and I always have to look both ways four times before I pull out because people come whizzing over the hill in both directions. The developer has said he would like to make a two-story duplex like the ones in Haymont. Have you honestly gone down any road in Haymont and seen a new construction that's completely out of character for the neighborhood and said, wow, that looks nice? I doubt it. It will not be in harmony with the surrounding area, which again is a, I believe it was number two requirement. The duplex will be out of character for the Greenwood Homes. There are no others. When the neighborhood was designed, it was a single-family home neighborhood. It was a planned neighborhood. The duplexes were not part of the plan and Elm Street is not part of Greenwood Homes. The developer has said in previous meetings that although he knows where I work and has access to my telephone number and email, that he has not been able to get up with me. I'm sorry, I am, have two jobs and I'm in a, I'm active in the community. So yeah, I probably wasn't home. But he never left any notes or anything like that. But that was in previous meetings. Also, this has been called a neglected property because no one has built on it or tried to buy it. When I bought my house 10 years ago, I did have the long-term goal of buying it to add to my property, but at the time I didn't know, I didn't have the means or the knowledge to know about how to go about doing that. Now that I know you can randomly offer people money for property, even if it's not for sale, it's too late. And again, it seems like Mr. Evans is not even the owner. So I don't know if the Brocks, who bought it for $50,000, bought it with the proper promise of a duplex, but I ask you to consider not to make this a duplex. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Bryant.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Rick Bryant. I live at 1803 Catalba Street. The Cumberland County 2010 Land Use Plan states explicitly that the nearest transit route from an SF-6 zone property should be no more than 1/4 mile. And this property at 1040 Stamper is indeed half a mile from the nearest transit route, which is the fast over at Utah Shopping Center on Elm Street. So that being the case, to build further on this property is the wrong thing to do. It does violate, as it stands now with that zoning at, it violates the conditions of the 2010 Land Use Plan. And also, it was stated in the last meeting that I attended here, February 26th, I spoke at that meeting as well in opposition, that this property at 1040 was not in Greenwood Homes. This property is in Greenwood Homes. It's on Stamper Road. It's just between Cherokee and Mantio. So it's on the east side of Stamper, which borders Greenwood Homes. And there are somewhere around 285 single-family residences SF-10 in the neighborhood. So this is one lot, one property that's zoned SF-6, which simply does not fit in with the zoning of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. And there is one safety concern, it's already been stated. The 2018, in November 2018, traffic count that was done, found that 2,200 vehicles travel on Stamper Road in a 24-hour period. And so take half of that, which is 1,100 vehicles going in either direction. So with that number of vehicles, it's a high number for a neighborhood street. Going to the property at the top of the hill, there on Stamper, where there is no driveway now, the driveway would have to be cut in, is gonna pose a high risk of rear-end collisions at that point because cars turning in to the driveway are gonna have to slow down to near the 1 to 5 mile an hour to comfortably turn into the, the property. So that is a safety hazard and these are the reasons I speak in opposition to the special use permit for that construction. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
We have no further speakers.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Evans.
We have time, I think. Scott asked for it.
Yeah, you had a...
Folks, let me, let me share this with you, for this gentleman. So the Brock family has bought this tract of land and in the whole duration of it, it was being bought by the Brock family. So let me get clarity on this and let me speak real slow on this. The young gentleman that is going to build a duplex done a 1031 tax referral exchange on this property. And if you're not familiar with that, I'll try to explain it to the best of my knowledge. Because of the public works at $18,200 and the lot clearing with massive trees on it to be hauled away in excess of around $10,000, Rebecca Person's office, Parker Lee, and I would like this in the notes, is holding money in escrow for the completion of this lot. So to be perfectly honest, Tim Evans made $12,000 on the lot and not $50,000 on the lot. And you can call Rebecca Person's office and ask for Parker Lee, the closing attorney, to find out money is escrowed in the account for this. Now, if Stamper Road is such a hazard road, one house there, there's still gonna be collisions there, I assume, if we build a house there, okay? But let me get clarity for Greg Harmon, okay? I've known this gentleman for the duration of since he has come on with the city. Craig and I have never had lunch together. We've never had dinner together. I think he told me at one time where he was from, I like the guy outside of business. We have never had anything. So for the comment that was made is unfair to me and to Mr. Greg Harmon, okay? So, you know, let's set the facts straight, sir, okay? And I didn't sell it for 50. And all that information is with Parker Lee at his office and that money is escrowed. And one other comment that I would like to say to the council, the lady that spoke that is an employee of PWC? Okay? I tried to knock on your door several times and you told me you had two jobs. I did not leave a note, okay? Because it would be hard to explain why I was knocking on your door, okay? Now, with that said, I'm a little upset. I've lost my train of thought here.
And, and Mr. Evans, you know...
But I just wanted to present the facts there because I think in this hearing, you're supposed to present facts. And we can build a house there today, but thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Counsel, any other comments, questions before I change the, close the public hearing? Evidence of hearing? All right. That will, we'll close the testimony part of the hearing. Counsel, I'll look to you for action on this. Counselor Mahendros, do you have some? Counselor Member Green.
My button, but it's not doing anything.
Okay, all right, I got you. Counselor Member Green.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, you may need to help me with this motion because I know that this is a very lengthy motion most of the time. Do you have it up? I've got it right here. Is that all I need to say?
Read that.
Okay, I got it right here. I got it right here.
And, and let me say before Counselor Green starts, with these evidentiary hearings, we've kinda have refined the process with the direction of legal and the school of government. So counsel, as we do this, I'll just read what is on the, the cam during the evidentiary hearing. The burden of demonstrating that the applicant complies with the applicable review or approval standards of the ordinance is on the applicant, which shall be demonstrated by competent material substantial evidence. And the burden is not on the city. So I know there were some things to say tonight, but these are our marching orders here. And so with that, I'll go to you, Counselmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling, one duplex in a single-family residential six, SF-6 zoning district, subject to the submitted site plans and conforming to the current Udo standards as depicted on the attached site plan, as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and that the application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a single-family six SF-6 zoning district, and, two, that this use complies with the findings listed, and, three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit the character of the area. If approved, the special use permit shall become effective with order of findings. And the six findings below, six findings have been met. Number one, the special use complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specifications in this ordinance included in the Section 30-4(c) use-specific standards. Two, the special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Three, the special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Number four, the special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plans and policies. Five, the special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land or the special use is a public necessity. And six, the special use complies with all relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations.
Mayor Kovit.
Ma'am?
For each of those findings, we do need a fact...
Okay.
...to go with it.
Okay, hold on. This is a learning curve.
Doing good.
I don't know, let me find where I wrote them. Okay. Number one, there is one driveway, one, is that the type information? Okay. There is one driveway, one, two-unit dwelling. Number, item number two, is a two-unit townhome with one driveway, two doors. Number three, it conforms with the, it fits the existing housing in the area. And number four, it is in general conformity and in compliance with the 2040 Land Use Plan. Number five, it will blend in with the neighborhood. Number six, the special use complies with other relevant city, state, and federal laws as required.
All right, that's a mouthful of emotion. That is a motion by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Mahendros. All right, discussion on that motion. All right, counsel, look to you for your votes. And Counselor Banks McGlaughlin, Madam Attorney, is not able to participate in this based on policy, doing it over the phone, okay? All right, so motion carries 6-3. Those voting in opposition, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, Davis, Benavente. All right. Thank you. All right, moving to item 9.02. Mr. Harmon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, once again. Well, I'm pulling this up. This is another special use permit, so we'll have to get it through and get the speakers for that sworn in as well.
All right.
Mr. Scott Brown and Mr. Ben Stout.
Okay, we're good.
All right, Harmon, with that, we'll open up the hearing.
So this is a special use permit case, SUP 2403. Mr. Scott Brown is the applicant. King Model Homes is the owner. This request is to amend or to continue a special use permit that was issued last year for 42 units. They have now acquired some additional property that allows them to go up to 111 units. These are located at 622, 6622, 6658 Old Bunce Road. It is in District 7. These are the three properties in question. On Old Bunce Road, just south of Clifdale Road, right here. The properties are zoned SF-6. The applicant is looking to do townhomes. These are medium-density residential is what our land use plan calls for in this area. Just a photo of the subject property currently and some of the surrounding properties. This is a site plan of what the developer, owner, is looking to accomplish with these 111 units now. And again, just as noted before, for a motion to approve, all six findings must be met. And if you'll hold any questions, you have a staff until after the hearing. Be glad to answer them at that point.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
We need the gavel, sir.
I had, I had opened it before he started.
Mr. Scott Brown.
Y'all like to hear this gavel, huh?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Scott Brown, 409 Chicago Drive, Suite 112, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Ben Stout. Done a number of projects for Ben over the past several years, been in front of you several times, been in front of you for this very same property or very same project. Just a few months ago, as Mr. Harmon mentioned, we did come before council and had a special use permit approved. I think this may be the third time for this same piece of property. It seems like everybody gets wind of what we're doing and they, they like the idea of it and they want to, they want to throw their property in as well. There's a community center across the road. Met with the church that does, that does a community center. They're in favor of the property or favor of the project. So we think it's a win-win for the area, for the neighborhood, be a betterment for the neighborhood. We have gone through TRC and took comments from staff. We've met with DOT as far as access to the development. There is a townhome project to the, almost southeast of this property here, almost diagonally south of it, that's wrapping up construction now. So there's some development in communities and some kind of a facelift, so to speak. And we're hoping to continue to add to that tonight with this additional property that was picked up and rolled it in and be able to provide a larger project with more... was picked up and roll it in and be able to provide a larger project with more, more homes and more opportunities there, as Mr. Harmon mentioned, with 111 units. So I'm wanting to go through real quickly for, with those findings of fact and just run through them as quickly as possible. Again, it's SF-6 zone and it is allowable use with a special use permit and indicate how the special use complies with all standards. The SUP will follow the UDO as well as all local, state, and federal guidelines. Again, we've met, we've met with TRC and there was no, no comments, no negative type comments that would be detrimental to the plan or would, that was, we were in non-compliance with anything as far as moving forward. Item number two is describe how the special use permit will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Multifamily is a permitted use in SF-6 zoning. The proposed townhomes will be an improvement to the property as well as the neighborhood. As mentioned while I go, there is a townhome project under construction on the opposite side of Bunce Road and this property, minus the third parcel, was already previously approved for a special use permit in the past 18 months and we are expanding this project with the, the two additional properties. The, the one to the south or to the west was the one that was approved for the special use permit originally. Indicate how the special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan. 111 units are proposed. We've already talked to DOT about access. There's no line of sight issues. No road improvements are required. The project will be served by PWC, Public Water and Sewer, and we will, and the project will be in compliance with the city's stormwater ordinance and all other aspects of the UDO. This demonstrate how the special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plan. As Mr. Harmon mentioned, it does cause for medium-density residential, which townhomes will comply with the current land use plan and develop. Also, again, as mentioned, it kind of improved the general area. If you've been through there, it will be, it will be an improvement. And again, the church welcomes it, that sponsors the community center across the road is kind of looking forward to it. Will explain how the special use permit will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land or the special use permit is a public necessity. It's not a public necessity, but there's no negative impacts, substantially negative impacts expected on the abutting land. We're not restricting the development of any adjoining land. The project's residential will be located in a residential neighborhood in an area where you have other similar type development with townhomes just across the street. So the project's not expected to have any negative impact on the surrounding property values. Will the special use permit comply with all relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations? Yes. Development will be in compliance with the UDO as well as any other local, state, and federal guidelines. I understand there's no other speakers signed up, so I'm assuming there's no opposition. So I'll be glad at this time to answer any questions that council may have of me based on what has been presented in front of you by either staff or myself.
All right. Madam Clerk, that's true. No more, no other speakers?
Yes, sir. We have no further speakers.
All right. Counsel, any, any questions for Mr. Brown? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brown, hold on a second. Counselmember Thompson.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brown, is that going to be a one-way-in, one-way-out residence?
It currently will be a one-way-in, one-way-out. A second access is required by the, by city code and that, as of right now, we've potentially talked about approaching the mobile home development to the south. They have a road stub about going in there, but more than likely, what we'll do is have an emergency access only to the south of the proposed entrance, as you see it on your plan, for emergency vehicles so that it would not be used as, as a regular in and out for residents, but it would be available for city emergency services.
And that's going through Banner Elk, and Banner Elk is not paved.
Right. And that's the reason I said we probably won't go that route. More than likely, it will be the second access, the emergency access will be, the second access will be emergency-only, located just to the south of the one that you're seeing on your page. And will also serve as a maintenance pathway for the proposed stormwater basin.
Now, the apartment complex to your southeast...
Yes, sir.
...is gated. Have you thought about gating?
It will not be gated.
Okay.
There's no current plans to gate. I mean, there's currently not any plans to gate it.
Thank you, sir.
Counselman Mahendros. All right. Let me close the hearing. All right. Counselman Mahendros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the special use permit to allow single-family attached dwellings in a single-family residential six SF-6 zoning district subject to submitted site plans and conforming with current UDO standards as depicted on the attached site plan as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and evidence presented during the hearing. And that application is consistent with the applicable plans because, one, the development's located in SF-6 zoning district; two, that this use complies with the findings listed; and, three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the characters, the character of the area. If approved, the special use permit shall become effective with the approval of the order of findings by the city council. The SUP shall expire one year from its effective date if the building permit is not issued in that time. All six findings below have been met. One, special use complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specifications in the ordinance. The applicant stated it's currently through the, going through the TRC Technical Review Committee review process and it'll have to be built to the UDO standards. Two, special use will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. As previously approved, duplexes, townhomes, and multifamily, this project is in keeping with other existing projects in the neighborhood. Three, the special use will not materially endanger public health or safety. DOT's already approved it, preliminary approval. PWC has signed off, as well as stormwater and UDO departments of the city. Four, special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plans and policies, conforms with the 2040 Land Use Plan. Five, special use will not substantially injure the value of abutting land or the special use is a public necessity. So it'll provide necessary housing units and, again, it's a residential project in a residential neighborhood. And six, special use complies with other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. Yes, the submitted site plan and engineering, it'll all be built per North Carolina building codes, local ordinance, UDO, and stormwater ordinances.
All right. Thank you, Counselman Mahendros. There's a motion as stated. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Benavente? All right. Discussion on the motion. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on this. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those voting. All right. And I'll go to Councilmember Benavente for item 10.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I understand that we can move this particular item to a future work session or just the next city council meeting?
This is the one that probably needs a work session. Is this what we were talking about with compression and other discussion, Mr. Manager? Pretty detailed conversation for council meeting.
Yes, sir. Or does it need a separate meeting, then?
You could move to table it to the upcoming work session.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table item 10.01 to the April work session.
All right. There's a motion to move this item table to the next work session, seconded by Counselman Mahendros. Any discussion on that? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Motion. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Counselmember Banks-McLaughlin. And counsel, if we could, administrative report on city, county, state-owned public property. As you know, it's been a interest to kind of find out how much public property we're holding. If it's, if you're so inclined, I'd like to move that to a work session. It's on their administrative report, so. Counselman Mahendros.
Move.
All right. All right. This is counsel, motion by Counselman Mahendros, seconded by Counselman Mahair to move that to a work session. Any discussion? All right. Those in favor, I mean, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on that.
Green.
All right. So motion carries unanimous. Motion, Judge?
Yes, sir.
All right. Y'all have, have a good one.